Council. Yes, I am. We're just waiting for a couple of people to show up?
Yeah, I think, you know, I think that's what you're gonna hear is give us a... You know how we've always said we want data, we want reports with fair notice?
Uh, yeah. Oh, that's, is that it?
Give her a kiss.
It's just the, it's just the process. Oh, right, yeah, it's, okay. Oh, I get all that, and so I'm not gonna, I will approve this. It's just the process here for us is usually we demand like mutation of corn. Um, yeah, it's just the... Yeah, they just... The, wait, you have five, six words for tonight? I bet you'll get eight if you wait a couple of weeks. No, not any, you don't need any.
Take, take a look at it, stop that.
I would just ask you, consider the process, not, I know you respect the process. Okay. Did you guys find Chris? We're gonna want him.
Greg?
Yeah. Yeah, so that, they're made, so those books, they, if they actually have... Yeah, or the... Well, there you go. Now, how...
Hey, I had already called this meeting to order, but it looks like now we have the quorum. Item number one is called to order, and item number two is Benel Fieldhouse contract and funding sources. In front of you, you should have the document provided by the CAO regarding the Benel Fieldhouse funding. I had hoped that this would have gotten to the town council a little earlier.
I'd like to make a comment about this. I'm particularly concerned that the suggestion was made to make up the difference with monies from Short Beach, and, which is on the CIP. And what I'm thinking is that if we wait until the next CIP, which is coming up very, very shortly, we can put these monies there rather than taking them as a Short Beach, let Short Beach do its project, and we could put the needed monies, which look to be $530,000, $39,000, on the CIP.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Young?
In regards to this, I actually met with the mayor and his chief of staff this afternoon, went over this with them. They're behind right now, there's no way they're gonna be able to get the irrigation process done for Short Beach for this year.
It's not even in design.
I got personal guarantees from both of them that they would make sure that the Short Beach would be in the next year's CIP, and that this could be used for this budget, for this, for the Benel Fieldhouse. But they guaranteed to me that they would make sure to have this in next year's CIP, in their own CIP budget.
Okay, Mr. Llewellyn?
No, I'm very happy to hear that. Just to let others know, I've actually polled the bulk of the Short Beach Commission, and, you know, it's not the, it's not the best of scenarios, but if the $600,000 for this year is not gonna be able to be utilized because the irrigation system hasn't been designed as of yet, and that money's gonna get advanced forward, it doesn't make sense to kind of delay and cause shifting with scheduling for two projects when we can just reallocate the $600,000 from this year, and then pick up the other $600,000 for the irrigation for next year.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to, to fund the Benel Fieldhouse project at a rate of $1,131,877, with the monies coming from this memo that the CAO provided to the council?
Madam Chairman, I so move.
Okay, and then there's the second. All, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, I'm just... All opposed?
No, I have a discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're in the middle of a vote, Madam Chairman?
We were in the middle of the vote.
Okay.
I'm sorry?
I think he should be allowed to say whatever he wants to say, because that cut off discussion too quickly.
Technically, you started voting, so you're, it's too late to discuss.
It's too late to discuss. So, I'm sorry.
Well, I'll vote no.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The motion passes nine to zero. My apologies, Mr. Can.
Was it important?
Uh, is there a motion to reconsider? Somebody on the prevailing side?
Motion to reconsider.
Is there a second for that?
Second.
All in favor of reconsidering?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Mr. Can, now we're back to discussion.
Thank you, folks. It was, okay, I'm looking at this for the first time, it's similar to what we saw maybe in December, but what it doesn't represent is bonding money that was specifically set aside for the Benel Fieldhouse other than the $80,000. Didn't not, is there not a $200,000 set aside CIP for Benel Fieldhouse?
Thank you, Mr. Can. I would like to call the Finance Director or the CAO, whichever their preference, to explain this.
Sorry for the delay, guys, I just...
Yes, there was originally $200,000, and I believe some of that money has been spent on architectural fees.
Engineering designs, test pit, soil tests, bidding specs, designs, engineering designs. So, some of that money has been spent already, and just getting this project even to the bidding stage, there was a lot of work that was done.
So, what I wanted to give you versus what we had at the last meet, the last two meetings was that you'll see it says available budget left, and that's what, what that highlighted, you guys had the exact numbers, which I thought were an issue last time.
Okay.
Yes. Ms. Manis?
I just wanna enter into the record conversation that was had at Building Needs with regards to the conversation that we had at the last council meeting with where, where did the rest of the bonded money go? And when Clarence and Dr. Robinson were here, they mentioned that money could be cobbled together under it. This explains that beautifully, how the money under Benel. But Clarence did, the CFO did clarify that monies for Benel that are in the CIP for the Board of Ed must be under Benel. So, you can't take money from Nichols and move it to Benel, and Franklin and move it to Benel. Once it's assigned to a specific school, it can't be moved around. And so, I don't know, maybe it could be, but they said they don't move things around like that. So, for example, the Nichols project is gonna have something added to it, 'cause there's extra money within that. So, each school has leftover funds like this sometimes, that they can cobble together for other projects.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Llewellyn?
Yeah, just to kind of follow up on that a little bit, I've been Building Needs Committee for six years, even before I got politically involved, and that's typically what's done, is that if there's money allocated towards a school, it stays with that school, there are some kind of general maintenance funds that fall under various descriptions, and those are kind of like available to whatever projects they get, they get allocated towards. And at the end of the last council session, I believe, there was actually a pretty extensive value engineering done for the Fieldhouse, so it was literally almost engineered and redrawn twice to make it a little more economical. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Can?
Two more questions. Does the 2017 include any other money for Benel Fieldhouse? Is the $600,000 not part of the current year's CIP?
The $600,000 was part of old Benel projects that were leftover funds, that's what you're considering. Are you talking about that?
Okay, that was not an actual Fieldhouse allotment, that was another, quote, "cobbled together" number?
It was part of Benel general, there was some HVAC and some school improvements, which the Fieldhouse falls under, if you go back and look in the older capital improvement books, at the description of what the funds were allotted for, there was one years ago for Benel Fieldhouse improvements, and I think it's the one that has the $99,000 left over. Benel Fieldhouse was listed in that when we thought we were just gonna do smaller renovations, realized you really need to redo the whole thing, you couldn't really work.
So, that $600,000 did have a title of Benel Fieldhouse on it, did it?
No, there wasn't 600, there was, what we're saying is there's a bunch of, there was a bunch of Benel projects. One of those in an older CIP plan did outline the Benel Fieldhouse, along with a bunch of other renovations and improvements within it. So, what we did is we did some of those and left money remaining, and paired that together with this.
Thank you.
Mr. Can?
One last question.
Okay.
The 2018 CIP, can you provide any assurances that the mayor's submission will include funding for the Short Beach irrigation project?
Yes, I built the book, and I've already put that project in the book for the mayor's, part of what he will propose to the council.
Mr. Farrington Posner?
It's at the bottom of the sheet, too.
Yep. Mr. Farrington Posner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I've heard that there were conversations now and verbal agreements between council members and the mayor, but I haven't seen anything in a budget yet, because that hasn't, that won't be coming out until a couple of weeks from now. So, what I'd like to do is table this until after we get the budget, and we could see and guarantee that it's definitely in the CIP, and I see it right there in black and white in front of me. So, I'm gonna make a motion to the table.
Is there a second? Okay, there's no second. Mr. Llewellyn?
Madam Chairman?
Yes?
I move the question.
Okay, is there a second for moving the question?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor of moving the question? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, all in favor of the question? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, the motion passes unanimously, nine to zero. Fabulous. The question was the Benel Fieldhouse contract was the funding source. Okay?
Madam Chairman?
I, I just wanna ask the town attorneys a specific thing. Chris or Brian, do we need to have a separate resolution to approve the contract? No, for Benel, for Benel Fieldhouse? No? We approve the funding, but we don't need a separate resolution for approving the contract? I thought it had, okay, maybe it hasn't, you're right.
The motion, the motion at our last council meeting was to award the contract.
Was to award the contract. No, the motion did not pass at the last...
We tabled it at the last council meeting.
We approved the funding, but we did not approve the awarding of the contract. Is there a motion to award the contract?
So moved, Madam Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of awarding the contract?
It's a special meeting, we can't do that.
No, it's a very...
It says contract.
Madam Chairman, you should specify to award the contract to who? Not just award the contract, that wouldn't...
Where's that?
I need the minutes from the last meeting. Recession for one second while Carol gets the minutes, but, minutes of the meeting. Don't go anywhere, don't go anywhere. In session.
We should wait till we get the...
I have it.
We should wait the two weeks, March 12. We get the budget March 12, we could vote on it March, I think, what, 13th or now.
Okay, fine.
Yeah, I have it, the contract.
Is there a motion to award the contract to THP? Okay, is it, there's...
Hold on, hold on, I can...
We're out of recess.
Take it off the table. No, we don't, we're, we're back from an adjournment, and it's not listed as a tabled item, it's listed as a new item in a special council meeting. So, it's basically, basically what we're doing right now is we're taking item two from the special council meeting and just approving it in two parts instead of one. So, the prior vote was to approve the funding sources, and then this vote will be to award the contract to THP Inc. as the low bidder, in the contract value amount of $1,131,877, so moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, that motion passes nine to zero.
Thank you, Alan, thank you, attorneys.
Thank you. Is there a motion to, can we amend this agenda to take something out of order, Mr. Leclerc? Okay, is there a motion to amend the agenda to take the contract for the Shakespeare Architect for the stabilization of theater out of order?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of taking that out of order? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes nine to zero. Okay, now we're on the contract for Shakespeare Architect for stabilization of theater, and Mr. Chase, I would ask you to handle this.
Handle this?
Saddle up. Wasting time, wasting time. No, you are. You're standing up. Boy, I'm ready to get out of here.
Hear ye, hear ye, introducing...
Mr. DePonte?
Mr. Chair, as the head of the Shakespeare Subcommittee, I would like to have Mr. Peter Wood explain to the town council exactly where we are in this process, and how this contract for Marvel Architects is before us.
There's no objection, Mr. Wood.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will try to keep this short, as I spoke with a number of you who were here earlier. The Shakespeare Subcommittee appointed a Subcommittee of that Subcommittee to interview and recommend an architect that would be responsible for identifying a scope of work to be bid to secure the theater from further damage from water infiltration and rodent infestation. We went through the standard process of issuing a request for qualifications, 12 firms responded. That was narrowed to six for interviews. One chose not to go forward, and we interviewed five firms. This was a four-member sub-subcommittee made up of members of the committee. Mr. Llewellyn, Ms. DePonte, Ed Goodrich, and myself made up that sub-subcommittee. We interviewed the five firms, we ranked them based on qualifications. John Casey was professional staff assistant to our Subcommittee. And we selected the firm that had by far the strongest qualifications based on their experience in theater restorations and redevelopment and historic renovations. The firm that we recommended to the Building Needs Committee is Marvel Architects. They met with both of our, both the committee and the Subcommittee about 10 days ago. That was open to members of the public and other council members, as have all of our Subcommittees been, all of our meetings. At that time, the Subcommittee approved, after the presentation by Marvel Architects, that they be recommended to be selected. Motion was made and approved by the Building Needs Committee, that that firm be recommended to the council, and that up to $95,000 be available for that contract. The proposed contract by Marvel Architects provides for $70,000 for their fees, and $25,000 for additional third-party consultants, such as MEP consultants and others that may be necessary. I wanna emphasize that we believe it's very important to go forward at this point to select an architect. They gave us a project schedule that would allow for approximately three months to put together the scope of work and plans, and then to go through the process of selecting a contractor to carry out the work that's required, again, simply to secure the building at this point in time. The work that's being done are repairs, it's not restoration. This work is not eligible for tax credits, for historic tax credits related to the project. So, at this point in time, really, all we need to go forward is to select the architect. Once we have that scope of work and it's ready to be bid, I presume that that process, once we have a proposed or recommended contractor and costs, that would come back to the council at that time. I also wanna emphasize, as those of you here on the committee who were in attendance for the Marvel Architect presentation, this is an incredibly well-experienced, it's frankly a world-class architectural firm. They've worked on the Royal Shakespeare Theater in England, they've done a lot of theater restorations in New York City and around the country. We would, we could not be in better hands in working with the Shakespeare Theater, which they've been familiar with for decades, frankly, and have been following what's happening with it here. So, I would urge your support and allow this to go forward. And once we have those plans done and are ready to select a contractor, we will come back with that recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. We will have a discussion, we'll go one at a time, start with the first district.
Should we be making a motion to accept the architect first?
That's up to you, madam.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that Marvel, that we approve the contract with Marvel Architects, as was unanimously approved by the Shakespeare Subcommittee, and was approved by the Building Needs Committee.
Motion made by Ms. DePonte, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hart. Discussion. Ms. DePonte?
This, this is only to start the stabilization of the theater. It's a very small baby step. It's to hire an architect to start the stabilization of the theater. Doing so buys us time to get the nonprofit going. It allows us to have a place where potential partners and investors would be interested in coming into, so they could see what the theater could be. It buys us time in order to develop a much, more expansive idea of what to do with the theater. It buys us time, and it makes us good stewards of the building. And that's all that we're trying to do. None of this is reimbursable by low income, by, by tax credits, by the historic tax credits. And I think that we've done our due diligence here, so I really encourage you to be with me and take this baby step, and hire, and hire an architectural firm.
Mr. Posner? Mr. Posner, do you have any discussion?
I will in a moment, I'll defer, I know Ms. Manis just had her hand up.
I prefer to, that we go in order, we'll go around. Mr. Posner, do you have any discussion?
Yeah, actually, I do. I know as you said, there were four people on the sub-subcommittee to Mr. Wood. It was yourself, Ms. DePonte, Mr. Llewellyn, and, and Mr. Goodrich. To, to interview architects, and I believe there were five of them, correct, that you interviewed in the end, and you did a scoring system. Can you tell me a little bit more about your scoring system, number one? How you measured your scoring system for all of these architects? And also, I'd like to know what the qualifications are of the four people that were on this sub-subcommittee to decide on a project of this magnitude?
Certainly. Unfortunately, I did not bring my materials having to do with the qualifications that were considered. There were probably five or six. This actually doesn't have the individual categories that were ranked. This has the totals. This has the totals of each of them. I think there were about half a dozen various categories, having to do with theater development, having to do with historic renovations, having to do with the broad experience of the firm.
Sorry?
There were five areas that were scored and evaluated. One was experience with renovation of historic structures, experience in design of large public space or assembly venues, which is what theaters are. Collaborate on technical approach. What are the critical challenges and best practices for a project such as this? Describe your knowledge of working on projects funded with government tax credits, municipal funding, and public or private grants. And describe your public engagement process and why this would be beneficial for this project. Thanks, Alan.
Let me hang on to it. Mr. Posner?
Yes.
You also asked about the qualifications of those on the Subcommittee.
Before we get to that, can we keep on the scoring for a minute? Can you break out that scoring for me? How, was it out of 10 for each category, or was it out of five?
The scoring was up to 100 in total for each category.
And there were five categories?
There were five categories.
So you could score 20 for each category, correct?
The scoring's weighted.
It was weighted. It was 30 for experience in renovation of historic structures, 15 points for large public spaces, and so forth.
What was the score of Marvel?
Marvel's combined and accumulative score was 386 from the four members out of a potential 400. There were two firms within three points of each other at 354 and 357, one firm at 303 and one at 263.
But we're only being presented with one. But there was two firms that pretty much tied, and they were not much less than Marvel. But this council is only being presented with one firm?
That's correct. They were actually 30 points below Marvel.
Oh, I can't support it at this point. I think there needs, I think there were two other firms that were very close in the scoring, and I think the council should have been presented all three.
Thank you, Mr. Posner. I would just comment that in bidding process, it's the highest bidder that's brought before the council. Mr. Harden?
I'm very comfortable with Marvin. I think they've done a great job. I've seen some of the material that they put forth, and I had the opportunity to attend the meeting where the Subcommittee was pushed to the second Subcommittee to make the decision. You know, it's important that we get this moving, and, you know, there are sometimes we hit the brick wall and we just end up going backwards again. But I think this is going to be a great project, and I'm looking forward to getting the building secured and getting it stable and protecting our investment there so that we can get it moving in the near future. So I'm totally in agreeance with this, and I'm hoping that we move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Harden. Ms. Khan?
Mr. Wood, two questions on the timeline. So we have one month of assessment, part one, part two, contract, and then there's a seven-month period of bid and construction. So I'm presuming that the architect's proposal for stabilization will be produced within three months?
That's correct.
And then the other seven?
That's the schedule they provided us, and they believe they can deliver on that.
And then the next seven months, the bid and construction administration, what tasks are going to occur within?
Well, first, it would be the public bidding process that we need to go through. It would be our doing another RFQ or RFP to select a contractor, having those bids come in and reviewed by the Subcommittee, and then recommended and approved by the Subcommittee, the Building Needs Committee, and come here to the council. We'd also have, have to have a contract drawn up and approved by the town. So how much that time is, I can't say. My guess is it's 60 to 90 days. And then the remainder of that time is presumed to be the rest, the repair period.
So we're anticipating in 10 months from the initiation of this contract, the theater stabilization will be completed.
Christmas present.
Yeah, my...
I'm looking at the flow chart here that was extended to us by Marvel Architects. And they are, yes, they're assuming approximately a seven-month period for that, obviously with the assumption that we don't get tied up or have to extend that based on awarding a contract.
That'll never happen. One last question. If, there's a minimal cost associated with the sub-engineers, I guess I can use that phrase, do you always pay like full dollar if projects go under, go over budget? Like if the building systems engineer projected $9,000, let's say they come in at 12, do we need to pay their full ask rate? Or is there some, is Marvel or any other architect, for that matter, on the hook for, say, some of that overage in terms of?
No, what they gave us was an estimate of their third-party costs. They don't have...
Exact...
They don't have exact numbers. What they've given us and what we are asking to be approved is a, an up to $95,000 for this work to be done. If there are additional services that are required or that we request, that would be billed independently in addition to this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Khan. Mr. Young?
Yeah, I've got a few questions. Number one, having not been part of the Sub-Subcommittee, $95,000 seems higher than when I was part of the committee before. It seems like double the price of what one of the first companies that came in and talked to us about.
We actually did get a bid from them.
I'm wondering who was the low bidder on this project?
We can't talk about things...
There, there was a discussion initially with another firm that met with the Subcommittee, and they were one of the firms that we interviewed and that did provide a proposal to us. The number that they discussed with the Subcommittee was, in fact...
We can't say?
Much higher when they came back with an actual proposal. So that number no longer was, was relevant in evaluating each of the architects and their costs.
So Marvel ended up being the low, the low bidder?
No, it was not the low, and it was not the high. It was one of the three in the middle.
Okay. Just in terms of process on this whole thing, we're going to pay $95,000 to have them look into the building and see what's wrong with it.
Well, and prepare a scope so that work can actually be done to protect the theater.
Stuff that's been done before, but we don't know, but that was 10 years ago, so we don't really know the condition of the building right now.
We haven't had a recent...
I mean, the town engineer, I know he has that information or can get it for us from previous.
One at a time, please. Is that a question, Mr. Young?
Well, what I'm getting at here is, I'm just looking at going, okay, we're going to spend $95,000 to them to do a scope of work, which is, you know, I think we're probably going to have to do that in a long...
And oversee the contract administration of the contractor that selected.
Right. So, but then we're talking about another $200,000 to $300,000 past that to do this work.
That's correct. They'll be the cost of the actual work.
Right, right. And this is all going to come from monies from Shakespeare, monies that have been allocated since 2008 in a bond.
That's correct. And my understanding is the only work that was previously done was when the roof was added about 10 or 11 years ago. This is, this is other and different and additional work.
Yeah, but a lot of people paid.
It's, it's not doing that same work again, certainly.
Well, my question is, is when they get in there and they start looking around at this and they start, and I'm, I'm literally reading this now as, as I'm sitting here because I just got it during the meeting. I'm just wondering, and we've talked about this in other settings, about the liability on this, what if they get in there and they find stuff that's a lot worse than it is or that we potentially think it is? The price goes up a lot on it, and I'm just afraid that we're going to be on the hook for something that is potentially very dangerous. I'm hoping not.
Well, that's part of the assessment that I think is important that be done now, and that is to determine what is the state, what is, what are the existing conditions in that building, and then being able to define what needs to be done to protect it from further deterioration. So we'll find out what they determine to be issues related to mold, issues related to ACM or other hazardous materials that's in there. We'll see what their determination is in terms of water that's infiltrated, where those repairs need to be, and what they estimate those costs to be. We will get a cost estimate from them before we do put all of this out for work, and that's one of the additional scopes that's included in their contract. So the whole point of this process is to inform us about what are we sitting on there? You know, what is needed now to be able to protect the existing theater so that there's not further damage and costs that will be incurred down the road?
I just remember when some of our early committee meetings or discussions that we had, part of the idea of this was to get the theater cleaned up so it would be presentable and be, you know, so, so people would be interested in it. Now, what we found over the course of this was that there were lots of people who were already interested in this, a sight unseen. And there were people who were big, you know, showed up there, and architectural firms and other people who were very interested in this, and the place is a shambles. So I'm always wondering, what is, why are we spending $95,000 on a thing that we already know people are interested in?
As a developer, my experience is, once a project's identified, from that point until the point at which financing is in place and construction can begin, can be, on average, two years or more. I don't think we want that building, and in fact, the worst condition that's affecting the theater right now is water infiltration. The roof took care of a lot of problems. It didn't take care of all the problems. So I think that's very important to get on top of. I think we had very good counsel from the town engineer to our committee. He certainly understands these issues and was very helpful to us in our process. So I think, and again, we're at a point where we're simply trying to protect the existing conditions and make sure that that's secured. So that whenever that next step happens, if a developer is selected, if we select a consultant and are ready to go ahead, we have funds for restoration, which of course don't appear out of nowhere, it's going to take some time to put together that whole financing package, including historic credits and a lot of gap funds that have to come from the state or otherwise. We can't say right now how long that's going to take. And I think our responsibility is to protect that asset in the meantime.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Ms. Antesa?
Thank you. I, I did go up on their website, since Marvel was the only one that was presented to us. I was, I was quite impressed, and I certainly want to do the best for Shakespeare, or Shakespeare Theater. However, I would also like to ensure that the proper process is followed so that the town does not lose any monies due to incorrect procedure. And I was finally given a list, and I initially heard of it at my trip down to Norwalk to look at Elm Street. Here's their list. First, you form a nonprofit, and I believe they are form, we are in the process of forming a nonprofit. Second, we have certi, have to have certification, is either a listing on a National Register or National Park Service or State Preservation Office. And then three, choose a developer. Then they form a, or we form a for-profit tax credit entity controlled by the developer, initial designs by architecture, architect and historic consultant, the construction, and then the admission of tax credit member immediately prior to spending the dollars. And it gave a list of the items that qualify, which are abatement, demolition, facade, construction, interior construction, architect, legal fees, construction interest, and developer fee. And the point is that if you don't form the nonprofit, get your certification, and choose the developer, one, two, three, then you may not draw monies down as you expend on these other items that I mentioned. And this is what I am really worried about, and I really would like to know the absolute truth. I don't, it, it isn't that I'm against Marvel?
I'm sorry?
I said, it's not that I'm against Marvel. I want to make sure that we don't get on the hook, as Phil said, for expenses if we do things in the wrong order. That's my concern.
Would you like me to address that? We do have, the nonprofit now has been established, and the board is being put together. We have a couple of additional candidates that have been brought to the Subcommittee, and we hope to fill out a five-person board within the next couple of months. The historic designation has been confirmed by the Subcommittee, so we know that that is indeed in place.
Do we have that in writing? I want to see everything in writing.
I'm sure we can get that confirmed in writing. And in terms of process for doing the restoration, my experience, half of my experience was acting as an executive director of nonprofit organizations whose mission was to develop affordable and mixed-income housing. And in those cases, the nonprofit itself did the development. They'd be responsible for hiring the architect and then going out and bidding for a contractor. I've worked with public agencies, cities, and other public agencies who are doing redevelopment, and they will often go through the process of selecting a developer because they don't have the capacity in-house to do the financing applications, deal with the tax credits, put together the closing, select the contractor. They want someone with expertise in doing that. There are different paths to reaching the same goal, however. And what I think, once we have this first step taken care of, what we need to look at is what's the most appropriate development process for the Shakespeare Theater for Stratford? It may be to select a developer at that time to assist us with the financing and to oversee the redevelopment process. It may be to hire a consultant that's done through the nonprofit or by the town to assist with that financing process. You know, the town does a lot of capital projects, and they do them in different ways. My understanding is many of these projects don't have a developer, a preferred developer that's been selected by the town. They're actual capital projects that are overseen by the town itself. So there's a financing component that does have, you know, its own particular expertise that's required, and that's obtaining the historic tax credits and any state tax credits that the project...
I think you can appreciate...
But that can be done through a developer or a consultant.
Right. I think you can appreciate my concern.
Sure.
And, and I think Phil sort of echoed it too, that if we don't do things in the proper order, that we then will not be eligible. And you said we filed for, I assume it's going to be a National Register type thing?
It's, it's already, the register is my understanding, but we'll, we'll get...
And do you have any idea when that will be forthcoming?
It's already on.
We should, we, I, I don't have the documentation in hand. We can probably get it to you within the week.
It's already on.
But there's no documentation in hand.
Okay. And I understand that, I don't know if he's got his 501(c)(3) established yet. I was at the meeting when the gentleman, say attorney, I forget it.
Chris Rooney?
Yeah. Said he was going to file.
Yeah, Chris is a member of the committee, is an attorney.
Right, right. I was at that meeting. Well, has he formed the non, see, what I'm saying is, they say you have to have the nonprofit. You have to have the recognition in writing. I learned that in politics here. If you don't see it in writing, you almost can't believe it.
Chris, I believe, is the one that confirmed it.
And then third, it says choose the developer, and it looks like the developer then initiates the, the approach to the architect. It would seem that we need the developer before we go to the architect.
That, that was the process, apparently, that was used in Norwalk, and that's a common process. It's not the only process for, again, simply to, the step that's being taken now certainly does not require a developer.
Yeah, I understand that, but that's not my point. My point is, if you don't follow step one, two, three, then you can't make these collect, tax credit items, you, you no longer have access to them.
And, and...
Because you've spent your own money.
Part of the value of having an architectural firm that's done a lot of historic renovation is that they do understand what is eligible in terms of work by historic tax credits.
Oh, I'm not denying that we should have them. I'm just trying to say, are we going to have them in the right order so that we don't get hung up? Because I'm going to tell you something, if you spend the 95, I don't know how much is left on the bond. Quite frankly, I would like to see that in writing too. But if we spend the $95,000... But if we spend the $95,000, and then we find out we're not, we're not going to get any income from any other source because we've done it out of order, then that building is just going to stand there, because the town of Stratford is not going to put up millions and millions of dollars to fix things and redo them, put the air conditioning in, and a whole bunch of other things that need to be done. That's why I'm saying, the architect is going to give you a plan, and I don't know why we can't wait until we do steps one, two, three, to ensure that we're going to get these tax credits, et cetera.
And it's essential that we do make sure that those things are done before the full renovation and restoration is done. I agree.
It isn't even full registration. It's the initial designs by the architect that are required after you've got your developer, according to the list.
I don't, that's not the case. The fees to the architect are not, they don't make up part of what you can be reimbursed for, for historic tax credits.
No.
Well, we're going to have a second round, Mitzi, so you can follow up on this. Alan?
Sure, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chase. Just to speak to a couple of points that have already been made, the process that we're following with the Shakespeare Subcommittee is identical to what's been done for Stratford High School. So as Stratford High weaned down architects, weaned down construction managers, weaned down other subconsultants, the subcommittee made a recommendation to Building Needs, Building Needs then forwarded favorable recommendations to the council, and the council then passed them. And this has happened 35 to 40 times over the last two and a half years. So the process is being followed, same as it has been before. Mr. Casey, who's been working with me on the high school for probably close to three years now, is also guiding and advising the Shakespeare Subcommittee. With regards to the historical tax credit, we had every, all five of the people who we interviewed told us that for doing stabilization or mothballing work, which is essentially what we're talking about, there are no available tax credits for it. The tax credits don't start kicking in until you start doing either demolition and removals or new work that's going to be permanent to the finished product of the building. And so Marvel, in one of their presentations, said to us that they checked the National Registry of Historic Places, and they confirmed that the theater is on it. And as part of their $95,000, they have $1,000 to bring in a historic tax credit consultant to do initial overview of what the potential tax credits would be if the project moved forward from the stabilization mothballing phase. So, once we get to the stabilization mothballing phase, our hope is that we'll be able to have some sort of key-controlled, available access to bring people through the lobby and have them see how the theater looks as it does today. Right now, there's a very cumbersome process to get access to the theater. It involves going through multiple town departments, it involves having police, fire on-site the whole time the doors are open. So, before we choose a developer, there's kind of this stabilization mothballing step where we can do a couple of things, keep the raccoons that are inhabiting the balconies, keep people out of the lobby, get the building secure, have it be stabilized, do the mothballing, see what unfolds with the nonprofit, and we can pick the developer later. I know from my 20-plus years in the construction industry that there are plans and there are steps, and usually you get like maybe to step two or to step three, and you start replanning or subplanning, breaking steps apart. There's no like one way that everything has to be done that always works every time. So, with that having said, if I can provide any other insight or add any details to anybody's questions, I'll be happy to do so on the second go-around.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Thank you, Ms. Llewellyn, Ms. Manis.
I have one question for you, and then some other questions too. Was an arts consultant present at these subcommittee meetings or in the interview process?
Was who present?
Was there an arts consultant, a person who is, that's their job? Like, they were an arts consultant?
Artist?
An arts consultant, like.
Oh, the arts consultant has been to some of the subcommittee members' meetings.
No, I don't mean the hired one. I mean an actual arts consultant, like there was the last time that this was undertaken, where we got the idea of the nonprofit. You know how that idea has come forward? So there was no one present from that?
No, the subcommittee's made up of members of the town and council.
All right, thank you. Thanks, that's all. One of the things that sticks with me from the public forum was, gentleman, I can't remember his name, and he left now, he said it's, you know, "It was New York before, and I want it to be a part of the community. Stratford needs to take ownership of this theater." I have watched Shakespeare meetings and votes happen for a long time, and it's wall-to-wall people. And I don't see those people here. Where's Matt? Where's Eddie? Where's Tom? Where's Henry? Where's Linda? Where's Margot? Where's all the people that care about this theater? The people who have always been engaged in the process? Orna Rawls Fine, Rosemary Martin, where are they? Why are they not sitting in these seats? I want to know where the people are, because they're always here. The theater's supposed to work with the community. It's not a building. I know we're talking about a building, but it's not a building. A theater is people. And if the people are going to be engaged in it, it can't be a singular vision that's exclusive and separate from what the people who have loved this thing for 30-plus years and longer than I've been alive are not feeling a part of it. The Shakespeare vote has been a packed house, and where are the people? Stratford rises with Shakespeare, I said that, one of our first council meetings. But you cannot rise without the group of people who love this place. Somebody said to me once that elected officials make decisions for people. And I'll never forget that statement. Elected officials make decisions for people, and that's just not who I am, so this doesn't sit well with me. I've gotten a number of emails and phone calls saying, please don't even go tonight. Please don't go. Please don't do this. My phone rang off the hook, emails after emails from people who desperately care about our theater and are honestly afraid. And I don't know how to fix it. I don't know the values it represents, some of the people, but clearly not a majority, or they would be here. And it's not my people. They're not here. They aren't sitting, and we can't do anything without them. It will not be successful without the community engaged. It was my issue with overlooking SSG. It was my, it's my issue with not bringing up Elm Street again. The people want to say, they've wanted to say all along, and Stratford's theater has stayed closed until the people can get it together. We can come in and make decisions for them, but that's not going to make the theater what that man said, which is part of the community and that they feel a part of it. I just, you know, and I keep hearing, the process is followed, and I appreciate, Mr. Llewellyn, you're very thorough with all the building stuff, and you know more about that than me. But when you have the process, the process was followed with selling the WPCA too. And look what happened. The people got mad. And I'm sorry, there's a lot of mad people tonight sitting home, and they're the same group of people. And there's a heartbeat in Stratford, and I just don't feel like, I don't know if Marvel's a bad choice. I think it's a, I've looked at their website. I don't think that this is such a bad idea either, but I just don't think they feel a part of it, and their heart's not there. And until I see these people come out with heart and passion for something, what are we spending the money on? Because I'm going to go to my constituents, and they're going to say, why did you spend taxpayer dollars on something like this? We didn't have a plan. Because that's what they said to me when I was walking for WPCA, the budgets, and when I see them in the road now, and when I talk to them about the development stuff, that's the only thing they say. You can do it, but have a plan, and please don't waste our money. Please don't waste our money. And I don't think fixing the theater is a waste. I think the work that you've done is phenomenal, but now it needs a chance to breathe with the people. Please bring them into the process. Bring in all of them. Bring in all of them. Like, let's get them at the table and show them what a great idea this is, and get their ideas going. That's all I'm asking is, because if we just do this without them, we're asking for trouble.
Thank you, Ms. Manis. Ms. DePonte?
Wow, that's hard to follow. All that we're talking about, guys, is whether we want to hire an architect to stabilize the theater. That's it. This is not part of any, this is a baby step in terms of mothballing the theater. So really, the choice is, is if it rains tomorrow, water goes into the theater, or if it rains next December, if it snows next December, it goes into the theater, the raccoons stay there, everybody is happy, homeless people are happy there, I mean, not happy, but this is, I mean, this is, this is just a tiny baby step. And if you care about that theater, and if you care about properties in town, we need to be good stewards, and this is a simple way of being a good steward. The criticism that we haven't seen three proposals or three contracts, the contract is what's in front of us. You don't negotiate with three different firms. And I just want to say, we just approved a Benel Fieldhouse contract. We didn't see three in front of us. We saw one in front of us. So I guess I'm not quite getting it. Mitzi, your comments about this being part of a process, no, this part is not part of a process. This is simply about making this theater, hiring an architect to develop the stabilization plans for this theater, okay? For that building. In terms, and Tina, the people, this is, this is the building part. A theater is people. That's the whole nonprofit part. And that's where the discussions of who sits on the board and the programming for the theater, that's where that all belongs. And these two parts are kind of, we're trying to go in parallel tracks here. We want to give the nonprofit a building that is as good as it can be. We have limited funds. These funds are from a bonding initiative that was done in 2008. That money is in a lockbox. It can be used for a Shakespeare theater. It can't be used for anything else, because one of the councilmen, who was very wise, had all sorts of protections for that money, so it couldn't, so we couldn't steal from it. But yes, the theater is the people, and Ted, when he spoke, he's on the Shakespeare Subcommittee, he's a huge supporter of this, of hiring the architect. So, but that part comes later. We at least need to be a good steward of the building, which really has nothing to do with people. It's a building, and we just need to be a good steward of it. Mr. Wood wants to, if I may, add another comment.
Mr. Wood, briefly?
I'll make this brief. To that point, one of the things that really set Marvel apart from the other four firms we talked to is their experience in outreach and participation processes. To develop in New York City, you have to go through community boards and extensive review and approval processes that involve the community. They know how to do that. They know how to engage the community and get them involved, and we know that's critical here, to get the town behind all the work that's going to need to be done. So, that was one of the reasons we were, again, that really set them apart, and that we were really interested in them.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Mr. Posner?
Thank you. Mr. Wood, I had asked a question before, and I know I didn't get the answers as we moved along, about the qualifications of the sub-subcommittee to do the interview process. Can you speak a little bit on the qualifications of those four members?
Sure. And I want to address a point that Ms. Antonazzi raised as well. Part of the reason that we're spending this money is to protect the costs of the town in doing the actual stabilization work. We could just, you know, hire a firm to come in and give us a bid and go do the work. They can give us whatever number they want, and we're not going to know what that really should represent. So, we felt this was the responsible way to go about it. The members of the subcommittee bring various experiences and expertise to the table. I think Beth and Alan both have, you know, the knowledge of the process that needs to be followed, and the relationships with the committee and council that needs to carry this out on our behalf. Alan, as he stated, has a lot of experience overseeing capital projects for the town. He has given us insight as to what those standard steps are, what the state requires in terms of capital projects by municipalities and towns, and has made sure that we have met those. He has, I don't know how many decades worth of experience in construction and civil engineering. I have over three decades of experience in development of multifamily developments, both historic and new construction. You know, I've done projects that are 300-plus units in New Haven and Stamford, and have worked for the largest national developer of affordable housing in the country.
So that's 200 points out of the possible 400, is construction experience between Mr. Llewellyn and yourself?
And development experience related to the financing, the financing issues and tax credits that have been raised. Ed Goodrich has a unique and particular experience that he brings to the table and passion related to this theater. He does have a sense of what the processes have been in the past, and that's important for us to understand, and to hopefully avoid the pitfalls that have been made before. You know, Beth's professional experience is pretty vast, and, you know, is related to, you know, a lot of, I mean, she's worked at the UN, she's worked at Yale, she's taught, she's bright, and she's familiar with, you know, municipal processes that need to be followed, including how to responsibly go about undertaking this process.
So my question, so my question then is, if you had four of you that were all scoring this, you know, the different architects, did any of you or the committee think that would have been maybe a good idea to have a consultant in those meetings?
We felt we were well represented by having the town engineer who's familiar and has sat in on countless processes like.
And did the town engineer sit in on all those sub-subcommittee meetings?
Yes, he did.
With the architects? And did he also speak and ask questions?
Yes, he did.
Okay, and?
He was directly involved in the interviews and in each of the sub-subcommittee meetings.
But nothing recorded? There was nothing recorded from the town engineer, his thoughts, opinions?
There are no tape recordings. I don't know what his notes are made up of, but I'm sure he has notes related to those discussions.
There was tape recordings to the executive sessions?
There were no tape recordings. When you say recordings, I don't know what you mean, but I'm.
Were there any recordings of his opinion? Because I hear that you guys each scored it, scored up to 100, the four subcommittee members, but the town engineer probably has the most experience out of all of you in there. Was there, was there any kind of opinion recorded or thoughts recorded or from the questions of the town engineer? Did anybody ask his opinion in this matter?
Frequently. His advice was welcome and was very much a part of our council.
So did the town engineer agree with the Marvel architect that was chosen?
We didn't ask his opinion on whether he thought it should have been them or someone else. He wasn't a member of the sub-subcommittee itself that was doing this election.
Okay.
You would, you know, I would say.
So that's why an independent, so when I, when I, when I asked you about an independent consultant, you're telling me the town engineer was there. I guess it really doesn't matter that the town engineer was there, because his employees is a conflict of interest. So I'm thinking there should have been some consultant with experience sitting in that room interviewing as well, an independent consultant that was brought in.
That was what, I mean, I think Alan and I both bring the technical expertise that is involved in all of this and have done much more extensive projects than this, so I'm not sure who that consultant would be. The technical expertise for the town was provided by the town engineer.
Okay.
Which I understand is the standard process.
Okay, so now, now, let's say the architect is hired, $95,000, which I hear there were bids at $45,000, which is half of that.
No.
I heard there was a bid for $45,000, which was half. You could say no, that's what I'm hearing. But let's say at $95,000, this architect is hired, we get the scope of work. What's next? What's next? What, where do we dip into to actually do the work that the architect is giving us the scope of work?
We'll have to bid out that. We'll have to bid out that scope of work by private contractors. They will come in and be given a walkthrough and a site tour of the property with the scope of work in hand. They will come back with bids, which we will then consider. We will interview whatever number we deem appropriate, and come back with a recommendation to the Building Needs Committee and to the council to approve that contract.
But now, hasn't this work already been done by architects in the past?
Not this work, no.
Not this work. And to say, how is the architect going to be able to figure out, cost-wise, the scope of work without actually getting into the building and tearing down stuff that needs to come down to see what's in there and how it really needs to be addressed? And could the scope of work change if we were to hire contractors to go in there and mothball the building? Could the scope of work change and end up raising in price on us from the architect's original submission?
There is always the possibility of additional work that's, that's found during demolition in a renovation project. This is sort of standard practice with renovations, especially with older properties, where you may not see everything with the initial walkthrough. It is the architect's responsibility to, insofar as possible, quantify the amount of work that's necessary to be done, and if need be, do, you know, some prying and partial demolition to expose, you know, where damage has been incurred.
The problem with that, the problem I'm finding here is, this is now the responsibility of the town. So any, any extra work that needs to be done, if we hire this architect of 100 grand right there, we still don't know how much is in bonded money, if it's 1.5 or 900,000. We still can't get an exact number on that. So, so my question here is, okay, we hired this architect. They, we get a contractor based on the architect's recommendation, scope of work. It turns out being more money. Now we've already opened up exposed stuff. We're finding more contamination, contamination or problems in there that's going to well exceed the money that we have bonded. This is all on the onus of the town now, you know, whereas if we had gone a developer route, it would not be on the town to, to front that money. And what are we going to do when the town runs out of bonded money to take care of this project? Because we went an architect route.
Any developer that you hired would look to the town for whatever remains from the bonded money as part of the overall financing for the project, and would likely use it for these kinds of costs that are not eligible for historic tax credits. I've never done a project where a town had money for infrastructure that was not applied to the overall financing. Obviously, it is a town-owned property. So the town does have liability for it, whether or not it does the work now. We felt we were trying to be responsible in securing the building and preventing any further damage to it that would simply raise costs. And once you start dealing with mold and rot, wood rot, you're, you're talking about the worst things that you can do to a wood structure. So we felt it was incumbent upon us to take the responsible steps, to try to secure the building and, as Mr. Llewellyn said, mothball it until the town can move itself forward to be able to undertake the full restoration. It's certainly been a difficult process since I've lived here in 1990. I've watched this town trip itself up time and again related to the Shakespeare Theater. I think we have an opportunity to have a fresh start. I think we have the right people on the Subcommittee. I think we have a very good technical expert in John Casey to help see us take the right steps to secure this property and to bring it back to life.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Thank you, Mr. Posner. Mr. Khan?
I'm satisfied with the responses I've heard.
Thank you, Mr. Khan. Mr. Young?
Let me just be straight with this. I'm not against Marvel by any means, and I know you've done, you know, due diligence on us, stuff like that. My big thing is just getting this stuff, finding out some of this stuff right now. If we were to not vote on this tonight, put it on the table, that building's not going to fall down in a month. It's been sitting there with worse holes, holes in it than it has now. I've heard two things. One, from another group who's told me to go after the contractor first, and going after, and you guys who are saying to go after the architect first. I'm not exactly sure who's right. And I'm not ready to make that decision right this second, until I figure it out.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Ms. Antezzo.
I have nothing more to say.
Thank you. Mr. Llewellyn?
Yeah, I just want to comment on, you know, on there being involvement of the people. So sort of before the WPCA issue happened, I was still, you know, I was in the process of getting myself acclimated, aware, and involved. And I think as my involvement started to, started to deepen, I don't think I went to a council meeting ever that had as many people in the room as are in here now. So it's really a great testament to all of you that, you know, times have changed quite, quite significantly. I mean, I remember by nine o'clock here, there wouldn't be more than five or six people sitting in those seats. So I think there are people here. I think there are people that are engaged, that, you know, that are here because they care, they want to do things. That's why Ted and Ken spoke before. And the only last thing I want to say is, at one point, Chris Rooney came to one of the Subcommittee meetings, and he said that he heard from Brian McManaman, who was the director of the Shakespeare Academy Summer Program, and he said that he'd gotten a call from Brian McManaman, saying that one of Brian's friends had called him and said, "I heard you're going to be the new theater director at the, at the renovated Shakespeare Theater that Stratford is happening." So just from doing the outreach and getting these architects and going through this design proposal process, we've created buzz and energy for our Shakespeare Theater that is taking place in Manhattan. So I'm sure we'll come to a vote on this soon.
Thank you, Mr. Llewellyn. Ms. Manis?
I'm itching to build something again. I like to build things. I come from a manufacturing town. I want to build things. But I want to ask a question similar to Mr. Young's question. I would love to have a show and tell, similar to the complete street show and tell with possibly a digital piece people could see online. They don't have to fill in stuff, but just pictures of what I just saw. Mr. Llewellyn, let me see his books and maybe an onsite gallery walk in council chambers. I remember when I was first elected, I had a networking event. SSG came to it. They had everything up that they wanted to do. They talked to the people in my community. They got a lot of support from that event. And I think that the stuff about, even though this is just looking at a building and a structure, there's so much invested buy-in. People want to feel part of the process. So I'm asking that you not force me to vote no today. I'm asking that you allow me to bring my people into the process, and let me work with the people to bring them into this. Let us all go to our constituents and work with our people and bring them out, and so that we go forward and we can say, this is not a waste, because some of us get it, and I hear some of us, you know, you don't get it, it's not, people are unsure. I understand that some parts of this are a great idea, and that fixing this building is important. But what I want, I represent people. I don't do what I want. I have to represent them. So right now, the people I represent don't get it, and I need to teach them. So if we could have a gallery walk and a show and tell, I think it would be a great event, and I think that that would get the buy-in that you need.
Is there a motion to table?
Thank, Mr. Chase. Chair has prerogative, like to say something.
I'd like to make a motion to table this.
There's a motion to table. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of tabling?
Aye.
Do you want to say something?
There's a motion, madam, there's a motion on the floor.
Oh, I'm sorry. No.
No.
No. You didn't get to speak, I'm sorry.
All right. All I was going to say is this. Tina, first of all, great idea. I would love to see pictures and what ultimately this is going to look like. The bottom line is, the building's falling down. All this does is to, using, again, Alan's term, is to mothball it, to stop the damage that's currently happening. That's all we're going to be doing. That's all I have to say. Is there a motion to table?
Motion to table.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
What are we tabling?
Six.
We're making a motion to table this. The contract.
We're making a motion to table the contract and further discussion on the Shakespeare as outlined on your agenda, Mitzi. There's no discussion for a table.
Mr., oh, we can't talk, right?
There's no discussion on a table motion. I won't try a roll call. I'll try a voice vote first. All those in favor of tabling?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Passes unanimously. I would, before I relinquish the chair, sorry, Beth, I would remind the council that we have a union contract. We have the Tavern Rock Road issue, and there's a number of people here for that. So I would ask that we move more quickly so these people can have their opportunity. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you.
Do we have to send that idea to the Subcommittee or do we?
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a Tavern Rock property. And before we start, I'd like to call on Bruce.
We needed Dave. Dave left.
Hello, everybody. So in June of 2015, the council at that time made a resolution accepting the 824 resolution recommending that they accept, basically was the sale of a portion of the town owned right away along Huntington Road and Tavern Rock, with two stipulations, one of which, sale go to the Open Space Fund and only single-family residences. Unfortunately, that approval did not give us a name of the buyer or did it give us a price. Now, I'd had, we had a buyer who said they came up and just not represents them, and then just recently, another person said they were interested. Since the councils did not give me any direction, I've come into the council now to say.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. There seems to be a lot of movement. I'm not sure if everybody's paying attention to what you're saying.
So what, because the.
Could you speak into the short microphone?
You need a bigger microphone. Shorter, we can arrange for that, too. Because the approval done in June of 2015 didn't give us a name of a buyer or a price, I now have two potential buyers. They're both here, would like to give you a short description, and then we can discuss how you want to approach it.
Okay, I just want to be clear. You do not have a con, in terms of offers, there are.
Two offers.
Two offers on the table for the property.
And I do not have a signed contract. I have deposit from each one, but I've not cashed. And I have, basically, an offer from each one. But basically, Mr. Knott thinks his client was the, you want to say, you think that the approval.
Well, not yet, not yet. Okay, so you have, so there are two offers, and one is for?
One is for 70,000, and the other was, what was the last one?
200.
The other one was for 200,000.
And does one have a conservation easement, or a planned conservation easement attached to it?
I'd like to address that as part of my presentation, please.
Okay. Mr. Alberg, would you like to speak for your client, please?
If you remember, they're turning out, I'm going to proceed first.
Okay. Mr. Knott, just a few minutes.
Well.
You're infamous.
I wanted, there's been a certain amount of notoriety regarding the Tavern Rock Road, Huntington Road property in the newspaper of late. I want to give you a little bit of background so that you understand what has been going on and what are, my involvement has been for the last two and a half years. I represent BG Development LLC, which is Ralph Grasso and Neil Velasquez, both of Stratford. I want to make reference to a folder of exhibits which I've handed to each of you, to which I'll be making reference during the course of my presentation. Exhibit one of which is an email from me to Tim Bishop dated April 1st, 2014, 15, rather, in which I advised Tim that I represented Ralph Grasso, who had been speaking to Amy Nor and Karen Kaiser in the Economic Development Office regarding the purchase of town property at the corner of Tavern Rock Road and Huntington Road. Exhibit two is a copy of a so-called red sheet, which had been delivered to the economic, to the Economic Development Office by the Chief Administrative Officer, Catherine Hausman, in June of 2014, and which had been given shortly thereafter to Ralph Grasso by Amy Nor, when Ralph had inquired about town properties for sale. It was from this red sheet that Ralph became aware of the property at the corner of Tavern Rock Road and Huntington Road being for sale. Please note that I've highlighted in yellow on this red sheet the two properties, one on Huntington Road and one on Tavern Rock Road, of which are the subject of this transaction. Exhibit three is a follow-up email from me to Tim Bishop dated April 6, 2015, which I enclosed three maps, two prepared by the state and one by the town, upon which I had roughly highlighted in yellow, all land owned by the town of Stratford at the corner of Tavern Rock Road and Huntington Road. Exhibit four is a letter dated December 19, 2014, from the Planning Commission to the then-town CAO indicating approval on December 16, 2014, pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 824, for the sale of one of the parcels, the .78 acre parcel owned by the town at the corner of Huntington and Tavern Rock Roads. You can see Gary Lawrenson's 8-24 review attached to that letter specifically indicates the approval was for the sale of a .78 acre parcel of property. Exhibit five is a letter that is erroneously dated March 26, 2015. The reason why I know that is because that letter makes reference to an approval that took place in May of 2015. So that letter is really, is meant to be dated May 16, 2015. That's from the Planning Commission also, to the town attorney indicating approval on May 19, 2016, under 824, to sell the .4 acre parcel owned by the town at the corner of Huntington Road and Tavern Rock Roads. And you can see from Gary Lawrenson's 8-24 review, on the second page, he states that in December of 2014, the Planning Commission had approved the .78 acre parcel. Now the Planning Commission is approving the .4 acre parcel for a total of 1.18 acres. And this is, this land was, became acquired by the town of Stratford as a result of the realignment of Tavern Rock Road over the years, twice, actually. Once when it went from the real old Tavern Rock Road to where the Tavern Rock Road was before. It was modified to intersect with Holly Lane, and then again, the second part, when it went to intersect with Holly Lane. Exhibit six is a copy of the minutes of the June 8, 2015 Town Council meeting, at which the Town Council approved the sale of the two parcels of land which makes up the town-owned property. Exhibit seven is a copy of a letter dated November 12, 2015, from my client's soil scientist, with an attached map showing that there are no wetlands on this site. This letter was prepared after the Town Council approved the sale to my client in June of 2015. As a result of that approval by the Town Council, my client incurred expense for wetland analysis. This was necessary because under Section 124 of the Town Zoning Regulations, any property located within inland wetlands is not counted towards lot area. Additionally, depending upon where property is located in the town of Stratford, there's either 100-foot setback, 250-foot setback, or 350-foot setback of regulated area, which means that property is restricted in its development. So it was necessary for my client to know whether there was wetlands on site before an analysis could be done as to the value of the property.
Mr. Knott?
Yes.
Just for clarification, you said that the June meeting, June 2015 meeting of the Town Council, said that the council approved the sale of the property to your clients? I guess I'm not seeing their names here.
No, the Town, the Town Council approved the sale of the property, which was the subject of the two Planning Commission approvals. of the two Planning Commission approvals.
Okay.
Those two Planning Commission approvals were initiated by my client and by my letters to Tim Bishop, which are the exhibits that I submitted earlier in the, in my package. Exhibit eight is a copy of my email to Bruce Jackson dated May 13th, 2016, May 3rd, 2016, enclosing a copy of the appraisal of the property. And exhibit nine is a copy of a survey dated November 1st, 2016, showing premises owned by the town at the corner of Tavern Rock and Huntington. Please note that there's an area which I have highlighted in green on this map, which represents the eastern 50 percent of the original Tavern Rock Road. That's the real old, old Tavern Rock Road, where that green is located. This property outlined in green abuts property owned by Mr. Thomas Dugus on Huntington Road. Under municipal law, when an old right-of-way is abandoned by the town, the property owner on each side is entitled to receive 50 percent of the conveyance. Therefore, as an abutting property owner, Mr. Dugus was entitled to receive 50 percent of the old Tavern Rock Road being abandoned. As you can see from this map, this area represented 8,054 square feet of land to be conveyed to Mr. Dugus at no cost to him. Now, with respect to Mr. Dugus, I had known that Judge Alberg's father had previously represented Mr. Dugus years ago, and I suspected that Judge Alberg still did. Consequently, when I saw that a portion of the town property was to be conveyed to his client, I contacted Judge Alberg to explain what was going on with the sale of the town property to my client and the abandonment of a small portion of the old Tavern Rock Road, a portion of which would anure to the benefit of Mr. Dugus. Needless to say, I was surprised and disappointed when I heard back from Judge Alberg that Mr. Dugus objected to my client's purchasing the town property, that he wanted to purchase it himself. Apparently, Mr. Dugus felt that he had some inherent right of first refusal to purchase the property, because he had indicated to some unknown town official years ago, a desire to purchase the property, and because the property abutted his property, he felt that that gave him some kind of priority towards purchasing this property. Obviously, from the documents that I've submitted in this package, you can see that my client has been working with the Economic Development Office, the CAO's office, the town attorney's office, my office, an appraiser, a soil scientist, and a surveyor since June of 2014, towards the acquisition of this property. My client has spent many thousands of dollars in legal fees, engineering fees, soil scientist's fees, appraisal fees, towards acquiring this property from the town. My client assumed all of the expenses associated with these studies, and as I indicated, has spent thousands of dollars in doing so. Needless to say, it's very upsetting to my client and to me, that Mr. Dugus is now seeking to upset a transaction which we have been diligently pursuing in good faith with the town since the summer of 2014. In those two and a half years that we have been prosecuting this acquisition, never once did any employee of the town of Stratford, anybody in the town attorney's office, anybody in my office, any representative of my client, anybody in any town office whatsoever do anything inappropriate with respect to the acquisition of this property. We followed the book every step of the way, under the guidance of Tim Bishop originally, and Bruce Jackson lately. And now we find ourselves here at the 11th hour, in a situation which is completely unfair to my client, after he has spent so much money in trying to do this the right way. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chairman. Actually- Could we hear from the other attorney now?
I was going to hear from him first, okay? Mr. Alberg?
Can I ask questions of both?
After, we hear Paul, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Members of the Town Council, my name is Kurt Alberg, I'm an attorney with offices at 2885 Main Street in Stratford, I represent Tom Dugus. As you may know, Tom has owned the property, abutting this subject parcel for, his family has for almost eighty years. He has farmed it, it is still an active farm in our town. His property consists of eleven acres. He has expressed an interest in buying this property for years. I can tell you, he represented to me, and I believe him, that in the 1980s, he approached then-acting town manager Emmett Murray, and asked him about buying this property, and was told point-blank, "Sorry, it's not on the market for sale." And every time he inquired, he was then told, "We're not selling the property." But transparency is due process, and what I want to address this evening is just that issue. Because what the Planning Commission did in 2015 violated FOI, our Freedom of Information laws, and I'll tell you why. I have passed out copies of the agenda and the minutes from the Planning Commission agenda for May 19th, 2015. I call your attention to Page 2, Item 8, where it succinctly says, I quote, "Section 8-24 Review, Sale a Portion of Right-of-Way Along Huntington Road and Tavern Rock Road." The minutes to the Town, to the Planning Commission meeting also, are, I passed out for May 19th, on Page 2, it reflects the same action by the Town Council, by the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission then refers that matter to the Town Council. You have the minutes and the agenda from that transaction. On June 8th, 2015, on Page 3, Item 5.23, the Town Council makes the same recommendation. The minutes reflect that action also on Page 4. So what was approved by the Town Council, the only thing the Town Council ever approved, and the Planning Commission, was the sale of a portion of a right-of-way along Tavern Rock and Huntington Road. If you take a look at map number, item number nine, which Attorney Knott passed out to you, you will find a rights-of-way, abandoned portions of Tavern Rock Road, which, so if you're my client or the public, you don't know what in the world the Town Council did. They did not sell a one-acre lot. And a one-acre lot is per what the assessor, just under one acre, .78 acres is what the town assessor's field card represents this property to be. It's noted to be vacant land. My position is that the adequate notice was not provided to the public to give them the opportunity to fairly sufficiently apprise themselves of the action that was proposed in direct violation of several Superior Court decisions. Section 1-225(c), which is part of the Freedom of Information Act, concerns the agenda of Town Council, of public agencies. And there are several Freedom of Information Commission decisions which talk about vague agendas, or inconclusive agendas, where the public doesn't know what's going on. We had that here. It's nobody's fault, it just happened. And what did the Freedom of Information Commission do? They held the action was null and void. Null and void. I want to further suggest that the town did not follow its own procedures in marketing this property as to where we ended up today. Section 35.1 of the Town Charter requires that upon receiving an offer to purchase town property, the 824 process commences, then it goes to the Town Council for you to decide what to do. But an offer contemplates identifying whom the parties are, a price, the terms, the dates. We don't know to this day who the parties are until Attorney Knott came up this morning, this evening. That never happened here. What is curious, too, about the Town Council minutes, I did not have the opportunity to make for you, that on January 12th, 2015, there was an 8-24 referral from the Planning Commission for five properties. Planning Commission decided, "We have excess properties, we want to do something with it, and we want the Town Council to act upon it." The Town Council offered, they voted, and I quote, "The town attorney is directed to market the foregoing properties, including this one, to market the foregoing properties for sale, and to present all offers to the Town Council for its consideration." That never happened. The Town Council never voted to approve this lot. That never happened, in 2014, 2015. So here we are, a couple of years down the road, where the town protocol to list properties, listing it with a Realtor never happened, sending out requests for proposals never happened, placing it on the signpost, placing the L E L ad, putting it online, was never done. But some of these council minutes indicate what the town did do at that January 12th, 2015 meeting. One of the properties that the Planning Commission recommended for sale on Broadbridge Avenue went into executive session to discuss the terms on the town attorney's section of the agenda. In other words, they had an offer, and that's the procedure that they utilized to proceed with that. In June 8th, 2015, the Town Council did the same thing, not for a property that was listed for sale previously, but had been approved under 8-24, this on Candlewood Road. So the town didn't file, follow its own rules. The town never approved the sale of that larger piece of property. What you're hearing from Attorney Knott, and I believe him, because it was a condemnation and a realignment of Tavern Rock Road in 2001. I was one of the assistant town attorneys when that happened, I'm very familiar with the process. The town apparently approved a sale of a portion of the right-of-way, we don't know where, but it never approved the sale of the majority of that lot. That never happened. So unfortunately, Mr. Grasso was stuck with a situation where he undertook these tasks, unfortunately, without a contract, at his risk. He undertook these things without the Town Council ever, or the Planning and zoning Commission, ever approving that sale of that lot. Mr. Dugus can't be faulted with that. He has expressed an interest in buying this property for years to add it to his own property. And he has indicated to me, and I will represent to you tonight, that if he's allowed to pursue with this sale, he will accept the deed restriction that remain open space to be enjoyed by all the residents of the town forever. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Manis, and then Mr. Chase.
Well, I was glad that you answered. One of my questions was, was this, I don't remember, I live right near there, and I don't ever remember there being a sign up that says, you know, "For sale," or at least, I would have, I would have recognized that. And the other thing is, is that, unfortunately, and I want to make sure that you guys, I've never seen you at a meeting, but this is a brand-new council that was not, you know, the fact that things are not transparent, and that things are, were done this way, is not surprising, but what I do want to say on record is that people give us a lot of criticism for being so, you know, with the attorneys and this and that, and asking us a little discombobulated, and the other council ran like clockwork, and this is what we now have to deal with, and this is a hot mess. So I don't know, I don't know what, I want to wait for some, I would like some legal advice from our attorneys with regards to this, and finding out exactly what role we have in it, because we can't even reconsider any, there's nothing, you know, we're really, we're brand-new councils, so these are, there's not even a reconsider or anything that we can do. What can we do?
Let me, now, Mr. Knott, first, Mr. Chase? We weren't addressing you yet.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Mr. Jackson, give us some options here.
Well, rather than try to do this at this hour of the evening, what I might suggest to do is table this for now, let me come to you with some recommendations based on what, but maybe some options going forward. I don't think this property's going to get any worse if it sits another month, and I'd rather not, at 11 o'clock at night, take you into an executive session and have a long meeting. I wanted-
Are you our guy?
I'm your guy.
You're our guy.
I'm your guy.
All right.
Can't you tell, I keep complaining about-
There's a lot of, you know, everybody just-
We all look alike, right?
When we complain about town attorney's fees, he's our guy.
But what I would say is, is that the, we, there's no chance to reconsider. I don't know how it came out on that, but that's why I brought it before you, because I said, I, there's no solution to this. I don't want to put either party in a bad position, but I want to come to you with some easy, some reasonable answers going forward.
Mr. Jackson, doesn't, doesn't the Town Council, and it's not clear to me, if a previous council, Town Council, did the Town Council vote to approve the sale of this property to a specific individual or corporation?
I have not found anything that shows it. I showed that they have an approval to sell it, which could be read two ways. It could be read Mr. Knott's way, which is that they anticipated a particular person, or you could read it that they were voting to put it up for sale in some way, and it, an offer came in, or it got, somehow it got for sale without it, you know, they could be offering just to put it out generically. Now, I have not found any evidence that these were posted anywhere. I'm still looking, I'm working with Amy Nor and Economic Development to see if it was put on the internet or anything else. Haven't found it yet, so there's two ways you could read the last council's approval.
Okay, got it. Madam Chairman, I move we table this, so I could-
There's a second by whom? Okay, Ms. Santozo, all in favor of tabling, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion's tabled. I mean, the discussion is tabled.
Strikes again.
Finally, we're on the Public Works contract.
What do I always say, inexperienced?
Yeah.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I have, regarding this-
Madam Chairman, regarding this contract, bang that gavel.
Shh, we're trying to finish up the meeting.
Madam Chairman, before us is a contract, Public Works contract. I would ask that the Finance Director and the CAO and our Human Resources Director come forward, I have just two simple questions.
In the executive session, there's an executive session requested.
For this contract?
Yes. All in favor of going into ex-
Who made that motion?
Oh, is there a motion to go into executive session, because it has been requested? It's collective bargaining.
Do we need to list the persons who are willing to attend?
Is there a motion to go into executive session with Mr. Chris Hodg, I'm sorry, with Mr. Chris Hodgson, Brian Leclerc, John Florrick, Mr. Walberg, Chris Timniak, Ronning, and the Town Council? Did I forget anybody? And Ms. Cabral?
Mr. Hodgson?
I did, he was first.
And you should note that the executive session is to discuss status, strategy, and negotiations in connection with the Public Works contract.
The executive session is to discuss strategy and negotiations with the contract, with the International Federation of Professional Technical Engineers, AFLCIO, CLC Local 134.
Point of order, Madam Chairman, Mr. Leclerc, you just outlined what we could or could not ask. Specifically, can a member of the council ask specific questions regarding the financial impact of this contract? Thank you.
Okay, is there, is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of going into executive session? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay, let's go. Is there a motion to come out of executive session?
Motion to come out of executive session.
Is there a second? Is there a motion to ratify the contract as discussed in-
Madam Chairman-
So moved.
Madam Chairman, I would move the approval of the Public Works contract into National Federation of Professional Technical-
So moved.
Engineers, AFLCIO, CLC Local 134.
Second.
Okay, so, so moved, so moved, and seconded, great.
For the record, Madam Chairman, you really should say-
Yes, you were right.
Who made the motion?
You were right.
Who seconded, Madam Chairman?
Mr. Chase made the motion. Ms. Manis seconded it.
And Mr. Farrington poses on here, I guess.
So, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, do we need a roll call vote for this? Brian, do we, we do not need a roll call vote?
Aye. Motion to adjourn, second.
Aye.
Aye.
Did you hear that?
Okay, the motion, the motion passes unanimously. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second.
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Meeting is adjourned.